That passes. At this point, we are in public comments. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Agenda items and items in the general area, subject matter of the commission. Please note that we can't take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes. Question me on both of the items before us, which are public hearings, maybe off or at the time of the hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to address us now?
Madam Chair, no members have signed up in advance, and I see no members in the room with their hands raised.
Thank you. As I've mentioned, we have no consent calendar items, so we are at public hearings. The first is the is 2B DTPSB3 LLC for an extension of time for a major architectural and tentative tract map approvals associated with the construction of a six-story, seventy-three thousand, three hundred square foot mixed-use building with forty-five for-sale residential units and ground floor commercial located on Block B of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan at the northeast corner of Bellardo Road and Museum Way. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, good evening. Just give me a moment, I will pull up my screen to share it with you. Okay. So the matter before you, as you've identified in the introduction, is the extension of time for the Block B building located downtown Palm Springs specific plan. It is involving the entitlements that were granted on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one by the City Council. Those included a major architectural application to construct the building. It also involved a tentative tract map to subdivide the parcel for condominium purposes. So as a part of that approval back in January of twenty-one, there was a condition that the applicant return certain elements of the project to the ARC. So that was reviewed and approved by ARC on May third of twenty twenty-one. So effectively, the entitlement was approved May third of twenty-one, which, under our ordinance, grants a two-year timeframe for an applicant to exercise their entitlements. The applicant, the applicant has submitted an extension request, and that's the matter before you. In terms of project updates that have happened since the January approval from council, as I mentioned, that one of the items was a condition of approval relative to activating the ground floor. So a ground floor activation plan was reviewed by the ARC on the third of twenty-one, and it involves additional sidewalk seating, pavers, and art pedestal strand lighting along the interior street or pedestrian pathway, as well as utility hookups for sidewalk fending. The other revision that happened to the project since the council approval was minor revisions to the interior courtyard and pool courtyard spaces, the placement of windows on the east elevation, and the design of the balcony railings and the dimensions of the balconies. So the ARC reviewed that on July fifth of twenty of last year, twenty twenty-two. And so I'll kind of just give you an overview of what has changed. This is the project that was reviewed by council in January of twenty-one. The ground floor activation plan that the ARC approved is shown here on the screen. And you can see on the left side is Bellardo Road. On the north side is Andreas Road. On the south side is Museum Way. Or on the bottom is Museum Way, and on the right side of the screen or the east side of the property is Market Street or the two-story building that faces Palm Canyon. So in this exhibit here, the applicant proposed the strand lighting along Market Street, the east side or the right side of the screen here to kind of create more interest along this street or interior walkway. They also propose an art pedestal with lighting along the south side of the property. And then they're proposing more seating on the west side, as well as utility hookups for vending carts. So that was, oh, and last is they propose enhanced paving as well. So that was what was approved by ARC. They also reviewed kind of the concepts of that ground floor activation plan here in these renderings. And then some of the other changes, as I mentioned, that were reviewed last year by the ARC included changes to the interior courtyard. On the right side, they're proposing to, they need to include this kind of this canopy overhang along the interior spaces, as well as that extending out from the interior lobby area where you enter the building. And that design is also carried forward onto the pool deck to provide some additional shading and relief from the sun. So the ARC did review that in July of last year. And then they had some changes to the balconies, which were originally shown as glass balconies. Those were changed to vertical cable railings, as well as some changes to the locations of windows that were required under building code and fire code issues that they were running them to. In terms of the question today, the time extension findings that the commission is required to make for the project. These are the seven that are required under the zoning code. So staff has prepared an analysis as to the proposed requests as it relates to these findings. You know, the most difficult ones that we typically see relative to time extensions are number five and number seven, actually, five through seven typically. And have they made effort to get the project underway, number five? Have they in same, kind of similar, number six? And then number seven, what circumstances that are extenuating have impacted the project as to why it hasn't been forward within the two years? So in terms of the efforts that the applicant has made, they have submitted applications to our building and engineering departments. The plan check was submitted back in November of twenty-one. They have done to revise some middles to the building department and to, in order to respond to plan check comments. The engineering department has also reviewed the final tract map application, and they also have had two revisions submitted responding to comments from our engineering plan checker. They also have had actually the tentative map, or excuse me, the tract map annexed into the community facilities district by city council, and that happened back in November of last year. So they have been making steps since the original approval to move the project forward. And in terms of extenuating circumstances, the applicant has submitted a documentation relative to a lawsuit that is pending with the Department of Industrial Relations as it relates to a determination that that office made relative to the project's prevailing wage applicability. So that lawsuit is still pending, and they do expect resolution to that at some point in this, this year, twenty twenty-three. They've also cited the COVID pandemic as causing delays to the project in terms of having, you know, given the magnitude and the size of the project and being able to meet with their applicant or, excuse me, their project team in order to move the, the, the project forward. So that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer questions of the commission.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Hirschhorn?
Thank you. I have two questions, dude. In, in this particular specific instance, what would constitute vesting of the entitlement?
So for the the major architectural, it would be pulling a building permit for, for that application, for the track, for the tentative tract map. Vesting of that application would be getting approval of the final map.
So typically, or in other projects, I say, I was told that vesting constituted turning soil, doing some underground work. So no work is required to vest in this case?
So the only mechanism that we have to know that, that work is going to occur is, is basically through a building permit. We don't, we don't regularly go out to sites to check to see that they've actually started with a fence or, you know, an earth mover or anything like that. It's typically, in terms of the record, it's through our building permits.
Oh, maybe the building permit have vests, maybe that's what I was thinking about. Thank you. No other question. Could you go back to the slide that shows the building department's submittals and, and responses?
Yes, one moment.
So it says that revised construction plans were submitted the last time on six fifteen twenty-two. This is about seven months later. Has the building department responded to those?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly look while we have other questions from the commission.
Yeah, I'd like to know that because that just seems like a long time to respond to construction comments. It'd just be interesting to know that. And then track map applications submitted, two revisions submitted. And then, so what's the status of the tract now?
They're working on their third review with our engineering office.
So comments have been submitted back to the applicant, and the applicant owes another submittal to the engineering department. Is that what, what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there other questions of staff? Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, David, I have two questions. One's regarding the extenuating circumstances, criteria number seven. Do we know what the date of the letter or the determination from the State Department of Industrial Relations was? I just wonder how long ago that was, just for curiosity purposes. While I think the COVID pandemic is enough of an extenuating circumstances for, for my comfort level, I'm just curious as to how long the debate has been going on between the applicant and the Department of Industrial Relations. Do we know that date?
I don't know the specific date. The applicant, I'm sure, has more specifics on that.
Okay, I'd be curious just to know, just to understand. I know these things take a long time, of course. And then my second question is really a design-related. It's not specifically related to the extension, but it's for my own edification, since I wasn't part of the original approval of this from the city council, as it turns out. Can you, and there were no elevation, I'm sorry, there were elevations. There were no sections presented as part of this package. Do you know for sure that the garage underneath the building is not going to require the sidewalk to be lifted the way it was needed to be done in front of the frontage on Palm Canyon where the Blaze Pizza and the other, the other sort of uses there are? I'm just curious as to whether or not it's going to be the same raised platform of sidewalk condition.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're going to make modifications to the sidewalk areas. And I'm, you know, again, the applicant might be able to confirm.
Let's have that confirmed by the applicant, I think, yeah. Again, it's not directly related to the extension, but I'm just curious as to what the future development is going to look like. That's my, my two questions.
Any other questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Layen?
Thank you. I'm looking for staff's opinion. Frequently, staff forms an opinion during the plan check process regarding the applicant's earnest pursuit of a building permit. And I'm wondering if the staff believes that the applicant has retained qualified consultants and the timeliness of responding to plan check comments and the completeness with which they address the comments that come up in plan check. If those all indicate that the applicant is diligently pursuing the building permit.
Yeah, when, in terms of the, the content, the information on the plans and the plan checks, staff is confident that they have been submitting complete documents and responding to the corrections with substantial changes as, as needed. So from our review of the plans, they, they have been responding and addressing those issues.
Great, thank you.
To go back to Commissioner Hirschhorn's question, the June fifteenth date, twenty twenty-two, was when the city received the revised plans from the applicant. And then the city responded on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two that there was a list of eight items that should be addressed. So I'm not sure where the applicant is in terms of addressing those, but they, they seem fairly minor relative to the scope of the project.
So since six twenty-one, they have not responded to these items?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think he said six twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, six twenty-two, okay.
Yeah, since, since basically end of June, we haven't, I don't believe they've submitted anything relative to the building permit. They've submitted items relative to the, the tract map, but not the building permit.
Are there other questions? Seeing none, the public hearing is open, and the applicant has ten minutes.
Good evening, am I allowed to speak?
Oh, yes.
Before I give my spiel here, why we should get extended, I just want to answer the questions that were raised. So the DIR and the City of Palm Springs and Great Development is arguing with the DIR since twenty eighteen.
What's the DIR?
The Department of Industrial Relations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and maybe to clarify that, if you have interest, what is being argued here is Palm Springs is a charter city, and as a charter city, it is exempt from prevailing wages. The DIR is trying to take a different position. The City of Palm Springs City Attorney has issued his own opinion to the DIR and confirming that they believe the charter city status is protecting the downtown project from prevailing wages. And we appealed the decision, and then the Department of Industrial Relations issued their final opinion in May of twenty twenty-two. And since then, we made efforts to meet with them to resolve the issue, but they didn't want to meet, so the whole thing is going to court. We filed a writ of mandate. The city is on our side, and a judge will decide the case in April of this year. That's at least the way we wrote schedule. There will not be a jury trial, there will be a briefing schedule. We submitted our brief, the city will submit a brief, and then the DIR will respond with a brief with all arguments in April. And then the judge has, I believe, sixty days to rule on the issues. On the sidewalk, Block A with the Blaze Pizza, the property is falling from the Hyatt all the way to the Kimpton Hotel pretty drastically, but the biggest fault is near the Blaze Pizza suite. So if you look at Block B, there's no elevation change, and that, that carries basically from Palm Canyon through Bellardo Road. So there won't be any changes on the sidewalk on Market Street or all along Bellardo Road. And I think these were the only questions, but, oh, and the, the last thing is, we are in the third plan check. We responded to the comments, but we haven't received a, a final comment from the plan checker yet.
When did you respond?
I'm sorry?
When did you respond?
Yes, we did respond. I don't know yet, I don't know where our, when our responses were submitted, so I have to check that with our architects. The biggest issue is the electric room and access for Edison. That needs to be resolved, the way they want to access the electric room. Is it via stairs, or how are they going to get their equipment in there? So there might be a small change necessary again. So we're waiting for the plan check. That is not that the city, that is, as you know, the city is outsourcing their plan check to a different company, and they have changed from a company, Esco, to a different company, I believe, in Los Angeles. And that since then, things just got a little slower, but obviously it was COVID that is an issue that we all have to respect. So with that, if you don't mind, I just would like to read a couple of prepared comments. Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair. On behalf of Great Development, I'm here to communicate our excitement to once again have the opportunity to collaborate with the Planning Commission and the City of Palm Springs to advance Phase Two of the downtown project. Palm Springs has become Southern California's most popular destination. The successful, the successful downtown renovation of Palm Springs as a premier, premier destination has many mothers. No comedic success can be attributed to any one contributor. We all equally share in what we have developed here for the residents, tourists, and generations to come. Great is prepared to perpetuate the noteworthy vision of Palm Springs as a thriving and expanding community by advancing Phase Two of the downtown projects with the development of a forty-five-unit residential project later this year. Construction document was submitted to the building department in twenty twenty-one for plan check and a ninety percent complete. The original plan was to start construction by fall of twenty twenty-two. Regrettably, the pandemic slowed productivity for everyone. Additionally, great and the City of Palm Springs mutually disagreed with the DIR's, DIR opinion that the downtown project should have been built with prevailing wages. The difference of opinions will be decided by a judge this April. Both the City of Palm Springs and with developments legal team are confident the ruling will be our, in our mutual favor. The favorable ruling will allow which to move forward with Phase Two of the downtown project. As to the project management, we choose to work with the same team that Octavia and I worked with successfully when we completed Phase One of the downtown project in twenty eighteen. One of the current downtown lenders has committed to the construction loan, and so did one of the local contractor, general contractors from Phase One. The general contractor is going to bid, to go out for bid by the end of March. Our plan is to pull a building permit by July and start the project August twenty twenty-three, which means we would be pouring concrete sometime in September or October. Construction time will be approximately twenty months with the opening of the residential project scheduled for the fall of twenty twenty-five. I'm happy to entertain any questions or discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions of the applicant while the public hearing is open? Vice Chair Roberts?
Thank you. Michael, can you give us an update with respect to a, a more detailed update with respect to how you're doing with the project? Timing, do you have your financing?
Yeah. As I said, we have the lender for, one of the lenders on the downtown project has issued their commitment that they're going to give us the money. So the capital stack is secured, and we are very positive on the project. And as I said before, the biggest, the biggest hurdle right now is the DIR and to receive the final plan check. And it's, it's January, so May is close, so we, we felt it's safer to ask for an extension than to miss that deadline by a couple of weeks or months. And we don't want to put a building permit in May or June because if we mobilize and start the project in June, then we are in July and August. And we don't want to ask for a permission to pour concrete in the middle of the night. So that's why we're planning to start the project September, October, when we pour the first two floors in concrete.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Thank you very much. The public hearing is closed, and it's time for commission comments, or I would entertain a motion to approve. Commissioner Roberts?
Still moved, approval is presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Layen?
Yeah, I'd like to offer one friendly amendment on the findings. On, excuse me, finding number three, we were required to find a number of things that they, there haven't been significant changes to proposed project and no new information or more severe environmental impacts. That, that information or that finding is missing from the findings that are offered on a resolution. And so I would like to suggest that at the end of the second paragraph of the findings, we add comma, and the project and its environs remain substantially consistent with those analyzed in the previously approved environmental impact report and agenda.
Director Hadler, are you good with that?
We are good with that, we can make that amendment.
I accept the amendment.
Does the secondary accept the amendment?
Yes.
Would you call the roll, please?
Duan, you may be, you may be muted.
Okay. Joe Roberts?
Yes.
Steve Miller? Scott, I'm sorry, Scott Miller?
Yes.
And Lori Layen?
Yes.
Michael Hirschhorn?
Yes.
Peter Marutse?
Yes.
Chair Willock?
Yes, and I just wanted to add a comment that this is exactly the kind of situation we envisioned when we were looking at an extension, and I will be very excited to see this, this move forward. I'm wishing you the best of luck with the lawsuit, and please invite us to the ribbon cutting or the groundbreaking.
Oh, I, I definitely will, and I highly appreciate your time tonight and approving our, our extension. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to item two A. Daystar Hotels LLC for a conditional use permit and a land use permit to operate a restaurant offering public service. There's somebody who's talking, if possibly, you can mute yourself. Within an existing hotel located at four five oh East Palm Canyon Drive, Zone R three, staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm going to share my screen here.
Madam Chair, somebody's still talking in the background.
Commissioners, it's, it's actually, unfortunately, Richard and his location in our office. He's close to the planning counter, and so I think he's picking up some of our residents who are probably in dropping off future planning commission items. So that is something we'll consider for a future meeting, is giving him a quieter space.
Thank you.
Richard, you might want to look at what you've put on the screen.
There we go. Is, is everybody seeing what I, what I have here?
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, so, good evening, Commissioners. As you know, Daystar Hotels LLC of four, four fifty East Palm Cannon Drive. Here we go. So Daystar Hotels is seeking the approval to operate a small hotel on the property with a public service offering. And the purpose for the application is a CUP is, is required for the operation of the restaurant with the public service option. And due to the age of the property, there is a parking limitation and per code, and land use permit application is an acceptable request for waiving of those parking requirements due to the age of the site and the site conditions. And, and as we see here, this is, they, it goes, the property goes from street And as we see here, this is, it goes, the property goes from street to street, East Palm Canyon up front, and the rear street view is the Avenida Ortega. So in 2019, this hotel was already in a bit of a blight condition, and the on-tense day storm really wreaked havoc on it. So Daystar Hotels has been renovating the project ever since. They purchased it in the summer of 2020. So right now. I'm sorry, sir, I'm in the middle of this. Okay, okay. What am I doing wrong? What's wrong? Okay, what do you want me to do? Display settings? Swap presenter's view? Like that? Okay, thank you. Okay, I apologize for the tech issue. A coworker came over and brought my attention that I should swap the screens. So where was I? Okay, so the blight conditions and they've been restored now. So here we have some elevations of what their proposal in terms of their final product. And basically, because of the original construction of this hotel, it's a courtyard style, so none of this is really going to be visible from the street. So here, we, this is oriented to the site location for the restaurant. So Palm Canyon is on the right here. And where this is all the primary bay parking. And this slide is actually the accessible path of travel that was submitted with the original Building Department tenant improvement plans. So they added to this, and they're showing us that this is an area of the hotel that is not being used for any hotel operations. So this is where the small restaurant is intended to be constructed. And then for further orientation, this is showing us as per the screenshots, 1, 2, 3, 4, walking through the courtyard and to the entry in the back northeast corner of the property for the restaurant. This is the actual area that is not being used in current photos. So there is a trellis that is unpermitted, and the applicant's aware of this, and they plan on removing it and remodeling it. Thank you. And then also just for, please note that for the public, I heard it was found just today that some of the commissioners may not have gotten the first page or two of the draft resolution. But we try to rectify that as quickly as possible, not as soon as we're ready for so this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff? Vice Chair Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of questions about the restaurant itself, so they may need to be answered from the applicant if Richard doesn't have these. But with respect to the parking on the adjacent streets, is this unrestricted parking? We know we have no parking in front or any on-street parking with Palm Canyon, but do the adjacent streets have available unlimited parking?
To my knowledge, the adjacent streets are open, public parking with a sufficient amount of web, primarily the street that you turn off of. Let's see, which one is it? The street just to the east. I'm sorry, to the Avenida. If you're traveling west on East Palm Canyon, it would be the first street. That, in my opinion, would be the the
Public.
Primary place that most people would park, if in fact they were driving there.
Yeah, obviously, Richard, what I'm getting at here is if we are to make the allowance to waive all the parking, I want to see that if people, if the general public is going to come to this restaurant, that there's actually parking for them. You know, some of the residential areas around the hotels, you know, that's heavy hotel area. Some of them got restrictions, night restriction. And I should have sent you this question earlier, and I'm sorry that I didn't. But I think it's important to know whether there is actually available parking for evening use for the restaurant. That leads me into my next group of questions. Do we know if, from what I could see in the staff report, the restaurant, I think it's the restaurant intends to be open from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, is that correct?
That's what I have in the report, based on the materials from
From the applicant. And then probably my next question will probably be better for the applicant, unless you know. Are they intending to have live music? And are they intending to have a bar? Will they be serving alcohol as a bar? And it'd also be helpful to know the type of restaurant that they're putting in. But again, the applicant can answer those questions if you don't readily have those answers.
Well, can I just say something about Vice Chair Roberts' question? I
No, what? What's?
To what he was saying about the parking, there is parking on Palm Canyon just in front of the next door neighbor, that sort of townhouse development just to the east. And I looked, there's about four or five curb parallel parking spaces there that I noticed.
And if I might, Vice Chair and Madam Chair, there is a lot of unrestricted street parking to the west on Villa Saída and to the east on South Calle Palo Fiero, excuse the pronunciation. It doesn't look like there's a lot of parking on the street to the north on Avenida Ortega because it looks like there's access to off-street parking that is associated with residential units there. But there does look to be ample parking on the streets to the east and west in addition to Palm Canyon.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. I was just trying to see if we had the parking that we would need if we were to waive it. That waiving these spaces wouldn't have a significant impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there an answer, Richard, on any of JR's questions regarding live music, bar, alcohol, and type of restaurant, or should we wait for the applicant?
I can wait in on the materials that I've reviewed for the report. And there is not any mention of alcohol or live music.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ace Patel. I'm the applicant. Is it okay?
No, no, it isn't. We're not in the public hearing yet.
Okay.
Sure, we'll give you, we'll give you an opportunity to see and answer all these questions.
Thanks.
I saw Commissioner Hirschfine's hand up and Commissioner Layen's.
No, I was just to make the point that I did see unrestricted parking out in front of the property immediately to the east of this on Palm Canyon.
Commissioner Layen.
I have two questions about parking. One is, the staff report points out very correctly that there are a number of hotels in the area and that there could be blocking traffic that would not require parking spaces. Nonetheless, this particular property has no sidewalk in front of it, and the parking's relatively shallow. I'm wondering, and having the sidewalk rotate foot traffic coming there. So my first question is, as part of the remodel and renovation of the hotel, is a sidewalk in the public right of way being required as part of the improvements?
So we spoke about this earlier, Lori, and I came across the email from my associate in engineering, and they said they did not have any conditions for this project. So apparently, they're not making them put in sidewalk.
I think Commissioner Layen, given the scale of the changes, I think, you know, the determination was made that to have them incur the expense of putting in the sidewalk for largely interior changes was not something we would typically do.
Okay, and for the interior changes, yes, but for the addition of a restaurant when there's inadequate parking and we walk in traffic, I think I might, I might have some suggestions there. The other thing is, I noticed that on the table of parking that is required and what would be waived, I noticed that there are two accessible parking spaces that are required and that only one is provided. And so the question is, can a city waive a federal mandate as far as a number of AD parking spaces that are required? Or does that then put the owner and the city in line for a potential lawsuit for not complying with Americans with Disabilities Act?
Thank you, Commissioner, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Generally, the handicap parking is based upon the total parking requirement. And so if the total parking requirement is being reduced through this waiver, it would reduce the handicap parking requirements as well. I have not looked specifically at this, but I don't believe we've got an ADA problem here if we're generally waiving the parking requirement or substantially waiving the parking requirement.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, a question about the actual number of seats. There's a number of different references to seating in the restaurant. The applicant initially requested 53. The staff's analysis showed a recommended reduction based on the parking reduction, 30 seats. But the administrative condition number 11 in the conditions of approval says a maximum of 40 dining seats. So I just would like clarification on that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Miller. Just to clarify that, and that was something meant to flag at the onset. They, as part of this application, they are requesting 40 seats. It is staff's recommendation that the condition PLN 11 reduce that to 30. And we'll talk about our rationale for that. There is a typo in that condition because it spells the word 30, but I believe 40 is in parentheses. It should read as 30. And then, of course, whatever decision you all make, we will amend that appropriately.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
So at this point, I have a question which has to do, there are two one is the number of seats. And I'm wondering what the staff rationale is for going to 30 and why it isn't 40. This, it, I couldn't find the rationale, and I wasn't sure that I agreed with the reduction.
Sure, yeah, maybe, Richard, I'll handle this a little bit. So, you know, the CUP that is being sought for the restaurant in this building really speaks to the restaurant being primarily for the benefit of the guests of the hotel. So I think we were extending that logic to also the land use permit to reduce the parking by thinking if there are 15 rooms in the hotel and you assume double occupancy, you're getting to about 30 guests. And so therefore, if you have 30 tables or 30 seats for 30 guests, you're not really generating any additional parking requirement in theory anyways. And, you know, you may already have for the guests that are already there. That was our thinking. I certainly understand that, you know, the parking waiver that is contemplated by the zoning code is certainly quite permissible. And so that was our thinking and our logic, but certainly, you know, the commission could make a different determination. And we can certainly hear the applicant's rationale for seeking 40, which, you know, I believe I've heard them say, you know, there may be guests that come or as other commissioners have mentioned, perhaps other guests of other hotels may want to come to the restaurant. So certainly, you know, we can have that conversation about the right number, but our our math was simply just to kind of translate the number of rooms and guests to tables.
And then the second is, I believe there's a condition that there can be no outside notification that there's a restaurant in the hotel. And I was wondering why? And I think there's a restaurant in the hotel across the street that does identify that there's a restaurant there. And so I was just wondering what the rationale would be for not having some signage for the restaurant.
Sure. I muted you, Richard. I'm sorry, but we couldn't hear over the other noise. So you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I think the rationale is similar to the parking issue and that the CUP that is being sought is really intended for a restaurant, that it's for the primary use of the guests of this hotel. But typically, we have conditioned that there'll be no substantial sort of promotion of that restaurant to the public, given that it's really premised on being primarily for the benefit of those hotel guests. Richard, does that jive with your thinking? Okay.
Okay, are there other questions? Commissioner Marutse?
Well, I mean, Holiday House has a, is a hotel, and it has a big sign that says they have a restaurant in there. And others on that street do as well. And it doesn't, LaRisen have a restaurant that's promoted in some way? Other than just word of mouth? I mean, isn't there a sign?
I would have to look into the specifics of those hotels, the zoning district they're in, and, you know, if there was a conditional use permit associated with those similar to this. But the conditions may be different, the context may be different, or they may be more historic. So I don't know, but I hear, you know, I hear the concern that we may be, you know, treating this business differently than others in the vicinity. So again, certainly, the commission can determine whether that condition is appropriate.
Okay, well, it does have to do with more facts, but all right, thank you.
Commissioner Layen has her hand up.
Yes, I'm getting some mixed messages here that leave me a little bit confused. In the staff report, the project description at the beginning of the report says the intent of the project is to revitalize the boutique hotel to contribute a positive vibrant business to the surrounding neighborhood, offer a dining option for guests, and a walkable dining option for adjacent neighborhoods and hotels. I'm hearing that we're not I'm not sure, are we trying to create something that people can walk to? Or are we trying to ward off the general population and keep this kind of exclusive and limited to the hotel guests itself? And I'm not sure if staff answers this or the applicant, but I think we need to figure out what the intent is before we're able to.
Madam Chair, I think I can comment at least. With respect to the code, the provision under the code that's being cited as authority for this restaurant is as an accessory use to the hotel. And under the code, the CUP would be justified if this restaurant is primarily used by hotel guests. And the commission may recall, we've had some discussions about what primarily means in other contexts. I believe it was standing, and Mr. Hadlin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is this was staff's application, or at least recommendation for an application to ensure that the restaurant remains primarily used by hotel guests and thereby meet that code requirement. But as Mr. Hadlin mentioned, you know, what does primarily mean? It's a majority or more. But will reduce, you know, will altering the signage make it more primarily for guests, less primarily? That's really a discretionary call that the commission makes based on the facts of this case.
Thank you. I had just one more comment, and that was the hours. I was wondering if staff had looked at the hours of restaurants. A restaurant serving dinner would probably typically not need to be open till midnight. So it was just a question about the, the hours and whether staff had really looked at that and analyzed that.
Oh, Richard, I'm not sure if you had conversations with the applicant, but I think, you know, we didn't necessarily question what the applicant had asked, and perhaps they can speak to their thinking around that, the hours that they're proposing.
There being no more questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. The applicant has ten minutes.
Hi, Commissioners, Madam Chair. So I wanted to address, my name is Ace Patel. I represent A-Star Hotels and we're really excited about this, this project and kind of revitalizing the hotel back to even better than what it was before. You know, our intent with this project is to create a four, four and a half star sort of very comfortable experience. You know, we're only fifteen keys, we're very small, but it'll be very similar to Holiday House and La Horizon and some of the other hotels that, that were mentioned along the same corridor. And the thought with the restaurant, adding the restaurant piece to it is, you know, we have a captive audience at our hotel. There's not a lot of options to walk to in terms of dining. And so we thought, you know, there's a corner of the property that's not really, that was really underutilized in the prior version of what this hotel was. And the thought was if we can create a little food and beverage offering primarily for hotel guests, we think it's accretive to the entire experience. And the reason for the hours is because we have to serve breakfast, we do have a liquor license, and so there will be a bar within the restaurant that will also serve alcohol. And so the thought was, again, primarily for residents, like just to have that optionality for food and beverage. And so that's why the hours seem long, but really have to start serving breakfast at six, six-thirty. And then we go into kind of the late hours with, with the restaurant and the bar optionality there. And so I, you know, I agree with a lot of the comments. We were struggling with, you know, as far as our understanding of the code, if we had a restaurant that was only for hotel guests, we wouldn't even have to apply for a CUP. And so the whole point of applying for the CUP from a code perspective was to allow some outside guests. But if there's restrictions of signage and, you know, only thirty seats, it just seemed a little sort of contradictory as to even having, having the CUP to begin with. So obviously, we'll, we'll follow whatever the determination of this hearing is and the findings that you guys agreed to. But, you know, I do agree, having a little bit of signage would help. You know, we're not going to put some massive sign out there. We're not trying to attract hundreds of people. But at the same time, it just helps from like figuring out where you're going for, for guests that do want to, do want to come in and enjoy the restaurant. So I think those were the questions. Oh, the other question I think was about what kind of restaurant? We're really aiming for a Mediterranean, like a fresh Mediterranean concept. And I know that's, that's very, not very specific, but think fresh seafoods and meats, a lot of grilled, healthy options, a lot of, a lot of like sort of finger foods in the sense of hummus and sort of tapa style, things you can eat around the pool. Like obviously, the whole courtyard experience is centered around the pool area. And so while it's a restaurant, it's also going to kind of serve our hotel guests who sit around the pool all day. And so that was really the thought behind, behind the concept, right? And it'll integrate with the design and the vibe of what we're trying to create for the hotel and really amp up that offering with this, you know, limited restaurant essentially. So I think I addressed everything unless, unless I missed something.
Thank you. Before I open this for questions, are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing, am I correct?
Yeah, none have registered in advance and none have raised their hand. And Madam Chair, I do have a little bit of clarification on the signage issue for the commission as well as Commissioner Maruzzi. If you'd like me to give that now or wait until after your questions for the applicant.
I think I'd rather wait until after your questions for the applicant. So if, do people have questions for the applicant? Vice Chair Roberts and then Commissioner Hirschbein.
Sir, thank you for answering the questions. It actually sounds like it's going to be a lovely addition as well as the hotel. So you will have bar service all day as well and until midnight?
That, that was a thought, yes.
Okay. Are you intending to have any live music outside of the building itself?
No, we aren't, and I'm not even sure we can with our liquor license, but the point is we weren't, we weren't contemplating live music.
Okay. And you would prefer to have forty seats, which is what you originally applied for, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we originally drew it out to have fifty-three seats, which is where that number came from. And so, you know, we, but we also want to get this approved. So I think, you know, for us running a thirty-seat restaurant, it's, it's difficult from a business perspective to kind of, you know, make it at least cash flow neutral. So the more seats, the better. And, and, you know, we understand we're asking for a parking waiver. So I guess our request to you folks is to, kind of the most seats we can get would be helpful. So I don't know what the difference is between forty and fifty, but wherever, wherever we can get to that's comfortable to get this approved is where we would like to end up.
Thank you, sir. Director Hadwin, I think to give him ten additional seats would only require three additional parking spaces, correct? So if we wanted to give him all fifty of his seats, which is still a pretty small place, that would only be an additional six spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Commissioner Hirschbein had questions?
Thank you. Yeah, just as a preamble, I'm very excited about the project. Thank you very much for taking this on. It's a huge endeavor. It'll be a great addition to the hotel and restaurant scene in the city. It's exactly what Palm Springs is about or should be about. This kind of local creative sort of placemaking. So thank you. I do have a question about pedestrian access into the project itself. Is there any pedestrian access from, I think it's Avenida Ortega, the street that runs east-west on the north of the site?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's sort of our back entrance. We really want folks to come through the sort of front door of Palm Canyon. It's, it's a neighborhood. I don't really want, you know, we're, we're very sort of careful about where we end up with our hotels. We've done twenty-five hotels in our existence and six, seven scratch restaurant concepts in our, in our history. We've been in the hotel business for, you know, thirty years.
Well, that's all okay. I just, just talk about this one.
Yeah, so, so the point is we want to be really sensitive to our neighborhood. And, you know, we are surrounded by, by neighbor, you know, by residents essentially. So I don't want a bunch of our guests going back on that residential street. I'd like them to enter the project from Palm Canyon so we can kind of control the flow is the.
Right. So the problem I saw was that there's, I think I counted, there's actually only two curbside parking spaces in that entire block. The rest of it's taken up with bay parking for the individual developments there. And so I think if there was an entrance there, you'd be encouraging drivers anyway to, to go down that street and perhaps block somebody from their bay parking space or taking up a private parking space. I'd be in favor, and I'm just running this by you, to not have public access into the development from that street, but restrict it to Palm Canyon.
I think that fits with our thought process on flow and really managing guest access. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I think that's what we were planning.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Before I take comments, Chair, Director Hadwin, you had a update.
Yes, so thank you to David Newell for, for being able to take out the Holiday House approval. And so it does look actually like there was a condition of approval that was approved for that prohibiting signage, similar to what we've required here. So if there is signage there, it is, it is not technically permitted. The condition reads exterior signage advertising the restaurant or bar use shall be strictly prohibited. As for some of the other restaurants on the, and hotel developments on, primarily, I think on the south side of Palm Canyon, those are largely designated as resort hotels. And so they have different requirements and are permitted to have restaurants that they advertise publicly. So I think that's where the disconnect is coming and what we're seeing on the ground in this area.
So that being said, question for you. Is staff opposed to having, to allowing some small signage for the restaurant? I know you've conditioned, but are you opposed to it?
I don't think that we would say that we are opposed. I think that we would want to, for the purposes of consistency, apply the rules here the way that we have in other locations. But, you know, again, we're providing information to the commission to determine what's best for this particular development.
Thank you. The item is before the commission. Chair Roberts, our Vice Chair Roberts, I'm sensing you have a motion to make. Am I correct?
I've got some comments.
Oh, you've got, we've got comments first, okay. Commissioner Miller?
Yes, so I also am excited about seeing this move forward, and I think this would be a great addition. But I do have some concerns. One concern is regarding the hours of operation. The location of this restaurant is right in the back along Avenida Ortega, which, as the applicant stated, and my site visit showed, is right up against a bunch of residential uses. So I have a little bit of a concern about having essentially an outdoor restaurant open until midnight and then perhaps lingering guests beyond that in an outdoor setting within a few feet of a number of residential. So I'm concerned about going to midnight. That's one thing I'd just like to kind of have the commission discuss a little bit. And then I've got a little bit of a concern about the restaurant drop-off in front for those guests that are coming in from other places that, that might be driving. Because it's not very conducive to, you know, safe drop-off along Palm Canyon. I don't want to suggest imposing some sort of, you know, parking management plan or valet parking requirement or anything like that at this point. But I'm wondering if this, if the commission, any other commissioners have any concern about perhaps wanting to potentially revisit this to see if there's any parking issues or drop-off issues, safety issues in a set amount of time, whether it's three months or six months or one year. I don't know if any other commissioners share that concern about the drop-off, but that's my two concerns is drop-off and the hours extending to midnight.
So we are at comments, Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, Commissioner Miller, I think those are two valid comments. I have a similar concern about the closeness of residential houses adjacent to this outdoor patio. But I asked staff in a letter today whether the neighborhood had been notified about the project. If notices have gone out, and they replied in the affirmative. So to me, if, if the immediate neighborhood's not concerned about it, then I'm less concerned about it. I'm not not concerned about it, but it certainly would have been more impactful if the next-door neighbor got up and said, "I don't want this next to me." And I, we just haven't heard that. And I've been told they've been noticed, number one. And number two, I also thought, and I think it's not a bad idea, to revisit the parking situation in three or six months after the opening to determine whether, like you said, a parking plan might be necessary. But I wouldn't want to impose it from day one. But I think it's certainly worth another look-see, you know, a few months after opening.
Other comments? Commissioner Relyan?
I agree with the concerns in both areas. I think they're valid. I would be willing to support a couple of things. One is a ten PM, at ten PM stop serving food. I also note that the conditions, as they are now written, Planning Commission Number Five indicates that there will be amplified music. It doesn't sound as though the applicant is looking for that. So I suggested that condition be reshaped to reflect what has been requested. I'd even be willing to support non-amplified music, provided that it ends at ten PM. And in that event, if somebody, if the applicant or a future owner wants to put a guitarist out there while the music, while the dinner's being served, I think that would be appropriate. And I love the idea of having a six-month checkback because that section of road is just notorious that, that curve for people not making good choices in how they're going to get around. Hence my support of, or wanting to take a look in six months and see if maybe a sidewalk or something else would be appropriate. But I would, with those two conditions addressed, I'd be willing to support forty seats there.
And I agree with Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maruzzi, yes?
And to add to that, I just would like to allow them to have a small sign. I don't know if we have to specify the size, but some sort of indication that there's a restaurant in there. You know, whether we've allowed that in the past, maybe that was a mistake. You know, I think Holiday House should have the right to put a, a sign there. So I don't know if they can do it retroactively, but I don't think we should penalize all hotels from now on that want to have a sign because in the past we didn't allow it. So I'd like to, I'd need some direction from staff of where the sign should be placed, how should it be, should it be, and all that. I don't know, but some sort of signage.
Other comments before I comment? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Since the applicant already agreed to it, in the motion, I'd like to make sure of approval, which I think we're getting to. I'd also like to make sure that the public pedestrian access is restricted to Palm Canyon.
So we're beginning to, governor, conditions, I wouldn't mind allowing the applicant the fifty spaces. They originally requested, as long as we have a look back. So I'm, I think there's millions of dollars going into this. I'd like it to succeed. I do agree with the ten, ten o'clock cutoff on meals, the non-amplified music, allowing some non-amplified music, the, the look back in six months at how the parking is working out and the small sign. I don't know if there are other, Commissioner Roberts, you had originally been looking at making a motion. Do you want to go there?
Yeah, I think I can craft something from all of your comments. I only differ maybe on one or two, and so I'll, I'll try something and then, you know, we can all cut and paste. What I'm hearing is approval. And I too would like to go ahead and give the applicant the fifty spaces. I'm sorry, the fifty chairs, because if we're going to waive thirteen spaces, it's only nineteen spaces total to go ahead and give him a better opportunity to be successful in such a small environment. So I would first move that we allow fifty seats and to waive the parking, the nineteen spaces. The other reason I feel comfortable doing that is my sense about this is that this is going to be a local serving restaurant. With all the other hotels and residents around this, I think this is going to become a cool local spot. And we're probably not going to get a lot, a whole lot of people driving here because there just won't be room. It's much like the Sparrows where it's a lovely place to go for dinner, but it's difficult to park. And I, I think they don't get a ton of outside traffic. Certainly, when I've been there, I haven't seen it. So I'm going to move to allow for fifty seats, waive the parking for that. I don't agree at cutting them off at ten PM, but I'm hearing you all say you really want to cut them off at ten PM. I think they should be allowed to have non-amplified music. I agree on signage. I think this applicant should be allowed to do a small tasteful sign. And I think if what we can do. And I think if what we can do is let them come back with that separately, if they would like to do that, and we'll take a look at that signage program. I think, oh, with respect to public access. Sir, are you okay with what, with the with the limiting of the public access? I I know you spoke affirmatively to that, but before we lock you to that, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the chance to comment back. So it depends, I would say. And when I say that, although we would like to have patrons coming through the front so we can control that path, they're also going to be walking through our hotel. And that means impacting guests. And so the other side of the other side of our operational mind says if you can get them in and out of the restaurant from Avenue, Avenida Ortega, where they're literally just going in the restaurant and then out, and they're not impacting walking through the hotel, it's a much easier way to control that flow. And so if I can make a suggestion, if we can not restrict it now and maybe do a look back if it's you know, if if we're gonna have a bunch of people back there and they make noise, like this is going to become an issue for the neighbors, and we're likely going to address it far before it gets to commission to you guys as commissioners, but maybe we can do a look back of if it's really becoming a disturbance or a nuisance, then we can restrict it. So I'd like
Thank you. Thank you. You you gave us what we needed here. My thought was to let them determine their own access for their own needs. I agree with everyone that we should have this come back. I'm a little, and just have it come back for a general look. It doesn't even need to come to us. It could be an administrative review. And staff can check for complaints. They can check for police complaints and enforcement complaints. So we don't really need to be part of enforcement, and we shouldn't. This, what we would request is that staff bring it back to us for changes if there are any problems with parking or noise in the surrounding neighborhoods. So I'm inclined to let them have their choice of access to their own hotel and restaurant. We'll adjust it later if it becomes a problem.
Can we get a sense of the commission on that?
Well, we can in a minute. When you let me finish making the motion, we can vote on it.
But I don't want to have to vote no on that one item. I think we should
What I will do is I will go back for comments before we and get a sense on the, there are two items, I think, here.
Okay, and then we covered signage, we covered time, we covered parking. There was something else, but I lost my train of thought, which we covered music. Yeah, I think this is one of those things that will be very, very difficult for us to determine impacts until it actually happens. There may be none. There may be some. We can't really know. And so I, you know, this is a tiny hotel. This is a tiny restaurant. My feeling is that we need to give them every opportunity to be a success. We're obviously all pleased this is happening. It's good for Palm Springs. These boutique hotels are such an important part of our brand, and we need to help them in any way we can. I know what I was gonna say. With respect to review, I'm worried about six months. It's gonna take them probably that much to even get up and running. I'm thinking this should come back either six months after they open.
Yeah.
Which might not even give them an opportunity to really build their base of clientele. Or I would prefer a year after they open to get a true sense of its impacts or lack of them. And I'll throw that out, Chair.
Before you do that, I have one question for Commissioner O'Leary. You suggested 10:00 cutoff for dinner, but you didn't do it for drinks. Which, what was your intention?
I think that they stop serving both food and alcohol at 10:00. That people linger over their drinks and linger over their dinner for another 45 minutes. That was my, that was my thought.
Okay. And just a question for the applicant. How much do you think that impacts you?
You're muted.
I think I think it's fairly impactful. And the reason is there seems to be a late night crowd at these other restaurants, Holiday House and La Horizon, and it's not wild or it's very subdued, but, you know, they want to have a couple of drinks into the evening. And if you, if you have to, if everyone knows you close at 10, they're gonna be less likely to come to your spot because they don't really want to drive around. Obviously, they're drinking. Don't want to drive around to multiple locations and visit multiple locations. So it's just another impediment for really growth and capturing the right market.
Chair, I'd like to also add something on this particular subject. I believe that the impacts of sound between 10:00 and midnight are going to be far more concerning for the hotel itself. I think this will self-police. So in other words, if they have people in the restaurant having drinks or eating dinner late, and, you know, a lot of visitors like that, if there's noise, they're gonna get complaints for their get, from their guests long before their neighbors. So I feel that we should let them go ahead to midnight.
Is there, is there another
in a year?
Is there
So that's in your motion. So you've changed the motion.
Now, I'd like to amend the motion for now to allow it to go to midnight, back to their original request.
Okay, do we have a second for the motion?
Before we go there, can I just ask a question? In terms of service, either food or beverage, is it all only taking place on that little patio on the very northeast corner? Or is some service occurring around the pool or indoors?
Yeah, that's a good question. The restaurant will end up serving, so we're likely not going to be able to have lunch in the restaurant. We just don't see that level of business. But it will be serving food and breakfast to hotel guests, whether they want to eat it in their room or around the pool in kind of the breakfast and lunch area. So to answer your question briefly, yes, it will. It will also serve food around the pool and around around the area there.
Well, the reason I'm asking is I think it'd be less impactful from a noise perspective if the late night stuff was happening around the pool, runs in that, in that back patio area.
And, you know, I would argue that, again, what, the area is so small that we're talking about. Again, we're either gonna have impacts or we're not gonna have impact. So if we're gonna go ahead and have this come back to staff to review noise and parking, they'll be reviewing all of it, and it may land back in our in our laps to adjust them. So, but let's give them a chance first, is what is my suggestion. I may be alone in that.
Well, let's have comments. I'm gonna second the motion unless somebody else wants to. Commissioner Maruzzi?
I don't need to second it, but I agree with Commissioner Roberts or Vice Chair Roberts that let's give them a chance to go to midnight and see how that goes and relates also to the parking issue. And I think the self-regulating part certainly will happen. If people are sitting around the pool late drinking and eating, that's gonna upset the guests that are trying to sleep. So that's, that's a self-policing thing, and we don't really know how it's all gonna turn out. So I'd like just to give them enough flexibility for that one year.
Other comments on the motion? So I believe I'm the seconder of it. Are there other comments? Seeing none? Let's call the motion.
So could you clarify what the various conditions are that we've included? Seating at 50?
Does staff want to read it back?
You want me to try? I was trying to take notes. So approval, allowing 50 seats, waiving the additional parking associated with the increase to 50 seats, allowing non-amplified music, allowing small signage, and I may offer a friendly sort of technical amendment to this, although I know that's not my role, just to say that it should be as permitted by the zoning code.
I accept that amendment.
Thank you. For a review, 12 months after opening, specifically looking at parking access and other complaints administratively, and then directing staff to return to the Planning Commission if changes are needed as a result of that. Does that cover it all?
So we are approving their, their original request to go to midnight. And we I think that's it. That's what we're really, yeah, that's it. Unless somebody else saw something.
The only additional review would be noise.
Oh, I'm sorry. One thing that wasn't clarified, we're allowing non-amplified music until what time? I think that should cut off by 10:00 p.m. regardless. And there might, that might be in our zoning anyway, isn't it, Director?
I mean, there are fairly strict noise regulations past 10:00 o'clock, so
Yeah, I think it's all
I virtue of that.
Not to bake in, yeah.
So we're changing the one condition that you do have in this staff condition. Commissioner Miller?
Just a typo, I think, on PLN, two hours of operation in the staff report. It says 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I think midnight is 12:00 a.m.
That would have been a bad restriction.
Just a typo.
We will add that.
You have to close at lunchtime for good. That would have been a bad restriction.
So we have a motion and a second. Can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair, Commissioner Chair Wermuth?
Yes.
Chair O'Leary?
Yes.
Chair Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hirschbein, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Maruzzi, and my apologies for the beginning, roll calls and motions. It's been a long time since I've done this.
Well, Commissioner Maruzzi?
Don't forget me.
Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maruzzi.
Yes.
Okay. This passes unanimously. Please invite us to your opening. Best of luck to you. We wish you the very best.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
And moving right along. Unfinished business, I believe we have none. We have no new business. Are there Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments? I do have the request that I made informally that next, at our next meeting, you, Mr. Priest can possibly explain what changes we can expect in video, the allowance of video if the governor lifts the the state of emergency. Commissioner Hirschbein?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. We'll be actually having a pretty big internal discussion within the firm this Friday about this. And then we will be prepared to discuss with the Planning Commission at the next meeting, AB 2449. That's the, that's the new law.
Thank you. I saw Commissioner Hirschbein and Vice Chair Roberts' hands.
Thanks. The commission and a subcommittee spent a lot of time crafting a zone change as far as the urban lot split and ADUs and so forth. And I was just wondering, maybe you don't know off the top of your head, but I'd just be curious as to if the city's been processing any permit applications under those zone changes.
I know we have one in queue, maybe a second, that are still in process, but we do have, I believe, one or two applications that are in process for that.
And then that have been approved?
None that have been approved yet, no. But in process.
And we have approved, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Roberts?
Oh, just very quickly, I'm hoping, Director, do we have any status? This is for no, no good reason at all, but do we have any, because I get asked all the time, do we have any update on what I think, is it still the End Ass Hotel? I don't even know what it's called anymore. Is it actually in construction or not?
The Thompson Hotel? Yeah, yeah. So there was a flurry of activity before the holidays. And there were construction trucks there during the day, and we had staff on site, you know, verifying that construction was happening. I know that that seems to have slowed a little bit. Part of that was the holiday. But we're also hearing part of it are ongoing supply challenges. So I think that they're doing batches of work when they get the materials in, and then it kind of slows down. But it is still very much active. We're hearing that they're still targeting a summer opening. You know, I know we all have our questions about that, but that's what we're hearing. So as far as we know, it's still very much on track.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Just quickly, Commissioner Hirschbein, there was a very detailed article in the Los Angeles Times about these ADUs and the lot splits, and I don't know if I passed it around, but I probably didn't. Essentially, they have been not been very successful.
They haven't been a lot of
For the whole state, it's not, they've not really been taken advantage of. And I don't remember exactly why, but there is an article in the LA Times. It's probably a month or two ago.
Do you still have it? Will you send it again? That's interesting.
Yeah, let me see if I can find it. But yeah, it was surprising to me.
Well, and if I might, just since this is sort of on topic, so tomorrow night, we will be taking an emergency, sorry, an urgency ordinance to the city council to make further changes to the ADU ordinance to reflect changes that were made as part of, you know, state law changes that took effect January 1st. They're not that extensive, you know, they talk a little bit about height and making more exceptions to yard and setback requirements. They spell out sort of a clear requirement. If a municipality or a local jurisdiction turns down an ADU or doesn't permit one, you know, there is, they're tightening the requirement to spell out very clearly the reasons for that denial and giving, you know, those applicants 60 days to remedy their application to get to an approval. So it's administrative changes like that that we'll do through the urgency ordinance. But then the intention is to obviously come back to all of you to make that a permanent ordinance and also look in tandem with that at other changes we may need to make to make sure that we're not sort of, you know, that there aren't regulatory barriers that still remain. So I think it would be interesting to see that article, see what some of the challenges are, and see if we can kind of roll that up together and what we look to do in the spring.
My understanding is that the ADU portion has been more successful than the lot split portion. And we have seen at least two new developers or two developers of new subdivisions or condos add ADUs. So are, do you anticipate we're going to see that more? Not just individuals adding them to their their properties, but seeing new build, new build with ADUs?
I think we will. I mean, I certainly think the interest is out there. Like you were saying, some of the more recent applications we've been reviewing have been proposing that, and I think, you know, the larger applications that are coming in at the exploratory phases are certainly contemplating it. So, excuse me, I think we'll see more of it.
Other question, we've moved to the Planning Director's report very quickly and questions of the Planning Director. So are there more questions? We do have an appeal tomorrow night.
We do, yes. So the 12 at Las, sorry?
Who's appealing?
So the 12 at Las Palmas development, if you recall, there was a debate amongst all of you on the issue of whether or not they could have a gate. They appealed to the city council on that, that matter, and so that will be heard tomorrow night. You know, they are arguing, you know, for all of the reasons that they presented to all of you, that they need the gate. And I do know that the surrounding community will be out speaking as well, sharing a lot of the same concerns they shared with all of you. So certainly we'll keep you updated on how that goes.
Think you expect a full agenda for our next meeting?
We are not tracking a lot of items for our next meeting, which is February 8th. We have RIOs coming back. So if you recall, that was sent to subcommittee, and there were productive conversations there, so we expect that will be coming back. And then one other item will be coming back to you, that is unfinished business. Which relates to road construction.
Are we seeing a slowdown with the interest rate environment and uncertainty?
It certainly feels like we've had less to fill our agendas in the last couple of cycles. It's hard to say. I feel like the planners are still busy and the applications are coming in. I think it's just where they are in process. We're also very busy with We're also very busy with doing testing for upcoming paperless filing or online application portal that will allow applicants to file their applications online. So we've been doing a lot of work related to that. I certainly don't want to suggest our planners aren't looking at the applications as quickly, but I think it's probably a combination of a few different things.
Thank you. Any other questions? With that, just so nice to see you all in the new year. And we are adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, February 8th of 2023. Have a nice two weeks. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Everyone, have a good evening.